Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 29, 2021. Council will continue to meet in hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be limited numbers of seats available in council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are announced, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Ikuhana Halmaukina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikuhana Halmaukina and the Grand Inca of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today, I would like to urge city council to come to the table and sit down with the very people who have expressed interest or concerns about the allocation of funds designated for COVID relief. Okay? Designated for COVID relief. The American Rescue Plan. Okay. Let me remind you, the title given to the funds reveals who the funds are actually for. The American Rescue Plan is not the city budget bailout plan or fund. The eye of the people are watching. Thousands of people were impacted by COVID. Unable to pay their rent, unable to buy food for their families, shoes, clothing, housing, healthcare. Every facet of life was impacted by the arrival of the pandemic. I will continue to say, city council needs to be more transparent of the affairs of the people as this decision is being made for a population of over 300,000 people. I would also continue to urge city council to be mindful of their oath taken to the people to support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America as stated in your Home Rule Charter. And I urge you to be more sensitive to the needs of indigenous people who are here in this very so-called city of Pittsburgh, which we don't identify it as such, but we are here. And so we also are a marginalized group of people. And I'm going to yield the rest of my time because my child needs me. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullin.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. For decades, the Pittsburgh Board of Education has taxed, spent, wasted, and harmed the people who pay these taxes. This current board and superintendent are even more unethical and noncompliant with policy. Do the courts have to be further clogged and more money squandered to get criminal and negligent actions reversed? If the people who make detrimental decisions and actions pay for those choices, they may mend their ways. The opportunity is now for correcting course. Harming a part of the city hurts the whole. Every family that leaves the city is another lost chance to build and sustain property. Building on strength means no need to build back better. The Board of Education is fully liable for their vote and refusal to readdress the situation that they created. If they don't break it, they don't have to fix it. Make Pittsburgh strong again. My sincere, consistent request is that city council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible and allow those who have poor access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Care down problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald and Miller, Belsuver, The Hill. This weekend, I invite you to engage with me in street debates, Senator Andrew Patrick being the focus. Global Intelligence Society candidate for mayor, Pittsburgh, 2021. Global intelligence fuses a minimum of the forms of reasoning or intelligence of the 21 primary disciplines. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Society for Microbiology and the Genetic Society of America. And since 2010, I have urged this council to pass legislation to control and also to assist in biogenetic research in this city. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is planning for the future of the city. The past provides information, often conflicting, for forming intelligent interpretations or estimates of what has happened. The present is nonexistent. Even at an attosecond precision, it is a vapor. The future is indeterminate. Action vectors that are founded on probabilities of near infinite multiple possibilities. Now, councilors, what is your 100-year plan? And I think that every mayoral candidate should have a future century plan. I do. And on a biological genetic vector, my plan for Pittsburgh includes adaptive protocols and procedures that should be encoded in ordinances for Pittsburgh carbon-based humans to deal with the following, to live with the following. One, DNA RNA altered original carbon humans. That process has already begun via mRNA vax for SARS-CoV-2. Two, cloned original carbon humans. Three, synthetic DNA-created carbon copies of carbon originals. Four, synthetic DNA-created carbon originals. If you're not aware of it, we have synthetic DNA. We can create for 10 years, create new organisms. Five, artificial silicon robot copies of carbon original humans. Six, artificial silicon robot originals. And seven, virtual holographs of one through six. And I think that the probability is greater than than point nine that all seven will confront Pittsburghers as competitors and our children and our grandchildren before 2200, I think earlier, 2170. And I think that Pittsburgh government must act. What do you think that CMU and Pitt are doing with cycles of greater than $200 million of investment every couple of years? I'm not interested as much in building back, no, but building forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Boikowitz.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andrea Boikowitz. I live on Parkview Avenue in Central Oakland. I'm speaking this morning to clarify the intent behind the petition that I submitted last week requesting a public hearing on 2021-1906, the bill proposing the creation of a new Oakland Public Realm District at the request of Walnut Capital. Our intent in circulating the petition was to provide an opportunity for residents, stakeholders, and community organizations both in Oakland and in other parts of Pittsburgh to discuss with council the process by which this zoning bill has been introduced and is to be considered. There are many people who signed our petition who are also interested in commenting on the content of the bill, but the primary concern at this moment is about the usefulness, the fairness, the effectiveness, and the appropriateness of allowing private developers to send zoning legislation of this magnitude to council without working with city planning through the ongoing neighborhood planning process. And it is that sense of urgency that informed our efforts in circulating the petition last week. Asking the Planning Commission to review this legislation in 90 days instead of insisting that the review take place as part of the Oakland Plan Process sets a bad precedent for communities all over the city. And it is that issue that we are hoping you will allow us to talk with you about before you send the bill to the Planning Commission. We ask that you table the bill before you today until a public hearing can be scheduled so that all members of the committee can adequately consider the implications of following through on this process before starting the Planning Commission's clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shaman Pohmai.
In Lakay Alakatin, greetings, everyone. I am Shaman Pohmai Chakmam Yehalahi. I am a member of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I am the medicine woman. I am the healer for our people, for indigenous people, for Aborigine people. And I want to be clear our position on COVID and what the United Nations and American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People have to say about indigenous people as it relates to COVID. Yet indigenous people are seeking our own solutions to this pandemic. We are taking action and using traditional knowledge and practices such as voluntary isolation, sealing off our territories, as well as preventative measures in our own languages and in our own culture. Here in the city of Pittsburgh, we are many, and we are many with a voice that has not been respected. There is parcels of land that we are seeking to obtain for our very own reasons of protecting ourselves and our future spans generations as it relates to COVID and sealing off particular territories for us so that we may be safe. We do not adhere to the policies and the executive orders and the mandates that citizens have to adhere to underneath the United States contractual agreement that they have as being citizens. We are distinct people. We are our own nation. We are the founders of your nation. We are the founders of the Constitution. And when you study your own history, and you should, as municipal officers, you will come to know who we are. We have made peace with your people, bringing you here and allowing you to come here running from tyranny. Now it is your obligation, as Congress has stated in House Congress 331, that you have a debt responsibility to the utmost respect and care to the Aborigine people. So we look forward to continuing our government-to-government meetings so that we can begin to discuss territories so that we may protect ourselves through this COVID pandemic. And I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheree Jennings. I saw Ms. Jennings with us previously, but I do not see her now. Are there any further speakers in chambers willing to wishing to speak before council? So please come forward. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, Apartment 316. That's up in the K. Lee where Ervis tires, up at the top of the hill, up from where the Civic Arena used to be. Now, I wanted to bring forward that I can remember when Mr. Ervis died, there was scheduled city council meeting. I took the bus and came down and was told at the front, at the chamber's door that there was no council, council meeting. All of Yens had went to his funeral. Now, I mean, I was really upset because I was spending money to come down here. We were not notified and Yens made the decision to do that. I was so upset. I went to Patik. He's dead now. That was Mr. Ervis's assistant. And I said to Mr. Patik, that's Oscar Patik's brother, I said, would Mr. Ervis want city council to go to his funeral or come to city council and take care of business? And he said, Mrs. Brown, Mr. Ervis would have wanted Yens council people to take care of the city business and not go to his funeral. Now, if you could go to his funeral, you thought that much of this man. I want you to help us that live in his building that he fought for us poor people to live in Katie where Ervis. I want you to help us because we have been notified that as of August the 31st, which was this year, 2021, we would no longer have security on the site in our building. And they and they will be replaced by cameras. I think that here are some of the reasons that shows that management has little regard for the safety of our, of us, the residents. I'm one of the residents up there. So is my husband. Having a security person on staff helps us to deter persons with bad intentions and help in metal and get help in medical situations that may arise. And it gives us residents a sense of feeling safe. A camera cannot give chest compressions to a person that's having some sort of medical attack. A camera cannot put a stop to someone that's being attacked in the hallway. Can a camera stop someone from trying to break into someone's apartment? Can a camera help someone that's having a mental episode that requires someone to talk and comfort that person? There are so many issues that can occur that could be helped by having security persons while waiting for an ambulance, police, or firemen to arrive. By the time the camera shows the situation to wherever it's sent to, the situation to, please call.
Very much. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have our first new paper is Bill 1894.
Bill 1894, Resolution Amending Resolution 345, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fox Rothschild LLP for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claim Act litigation by increasing the total spend by $15,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $295,000.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held. Bill 1895.
Bill 1895, Resolution Repelling Items in Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, which authorized the sale of property in various wards of the city due to incompletion of sale items A through D. 6824 Fifth, 502 Winterburn, 2145 Mazette, 1936 Noble Stone.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion, council president?
Just briefly, why are they withdrawn?
I believe these are the properties that did not complete sale is why these are going to be withdrawn.
Because I know, one, she's been trying to get the property for two years.
Doug Anderson.
I just need to withdraw them and then have to go through that whole process.
Sorry. Oh, they couldn't hear you.
Can't hear you. You need to speak in your mic.
I'd hate to withdraw these and then have to go through this whole process again. If this one property is the one I'm thinking of, the woman's been trying to acquire this property for over two years.
Want to speak with her and come Tuesday, we can make a motion to delete this one if necessary?
Yeah. Well, I'd actually like to, the ones in my district, I like to take off because the other one is just a vacant lot next to a house that we demoed. Yeah, to what? To hold for one week. Motion to hold one week.
There is a second?
Okay, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held one week. Bill 1896.
Bill 1896, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Item A Through E. 235 North Aiken, 208 Shetland, 1113 Fulton, 912 Constance, and Zero Perry'sville.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1897.
Bill 1897, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of CI Technologies, Inc. in the Amount of $17,000 for a One-Year Renewal of the License for IA Pro Professional Standard Software and Related Technologies for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1898.
Bill 1898, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Swank Motor Pictures, Inc. in the Amount Not to Exceed $17,175 for Rental and Display Rights of Certain Movie Entertainment for Events Held by the Office of Special Events.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just here.
Councilwoman Gross?
This is for the movies in the park. It's a $17,000 warrant, but I just wanted to acknowledge it if it was one of the ones that Special Events or Parks and Rec did to hold outdoor movies during COVID. And just give them credit for being creative, but I'm not sure if that this is this one. I can't tell.
I believe this is Councilwoman Gross.
So, well, well done to the departments that were scrambling to provide safe outdoor entertainment while we were all in social distancing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1899.
Bill 1899, Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2021 Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to Be Used in the 2021 Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $150,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1901.
Bill 1901, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Coral Center for Civic Leadership in the Amount of $8,750 for Fellowship Services Provided to the City for Placement Fees and Public Sector Fellows.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1902.
Bill 1902, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to Reallocate Transferred Funds to Support Allegheny County Department of Economic Development's Match for HUD-led Safety and Healthy Homes Grant Expenditures.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1914.
Bill 1914, Resolution Declaring Housing as a Human Right.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
A move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We need a motion to approve the intro departmental transfers.
A move.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. We need a motion to approve the P cards.
A move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. One supplemental paper, Bill 1928.
Bill 1928, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 259, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for Renovation to the South Side Park, to add language to allow the city to accept the grant award and spend the funds.
Motion to approve.
Second, very brief discussion, please.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to give a shout out to friends of South Side Park. It's an all-volunteer organization that that works tirelessly up there and they're just doing amazing things and everything that we can do to assist with things like grant monies and and special allocations for them to do their work I'm all about. So I just want to give them a shout out, say thank you and thank members for supporting this.
Thank you, council president.
I just want to congratulate Councilman Kraus because you're doing so much in your district and you can really see a lot of the changes. So congratulations on all the work you're doing.
Thanks, Madam President.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Deferred Paper, Bill 1744.
Bill 1744, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Lease Agreement with the Flips Conservatory and Botanical Garding for the City Facility known the Garden Center for a Period of 10 Years, an Annual Rental Fee of $1 per Year, with the Possibility of Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our new papers begin with Bill 1888.
Bill 1888, Resolution Granting Unto Mount Carmel Baptist Church of Pittsburgh Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to HVAC Units at 2,000 Brighton Road in the 25th Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry, committee is just.
Any discussion?
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1889.
Bill 1889, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Design Services with Gannett Fleming, Inc. for the Mount Washington Landslide Mitigation Project and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $2 Million.
Motion to approve.
Second. With discussion.
With discussion. Council president?
Thank you. I just want to thank the administration and all my colleagues for working with me on on a lot of the things on Grandview Avenue. As I talk about this many times, and I've taken Congressman Doyle, Senator Fontana, our representatives, all up to Grandview Avenue more than once and on McGarville roadway to see some of the issues that we have and some of the challenges that we have in repairing that roadway. It's actually probably going to take more like $40 million to fix Grandview Avenue, but this is definitely a start. And I want to thank Congressman Doyle and his team and Senator Fontana for being such strong advocates for our district. They help. You know, I hear people talk a lot of times, and I'm just going to say this, a lot of times about, you know, change and doing things differently. And I just want to say I'm grateful for the seniority and the leadership that we have on the state and federal level with some of the most respected senior members of Congress and of Senate. And I just, I'm, I'm very extremely grateful for the work that they do, not just in my district, but I see them trying and struggling to get things all the time. And if they can't do it, nobody can. And so I just, I, we just see that they're doing a lot of great things. And the administration works extremely well with them. And I think we all know now, especially those of us who have been on council for a while, that to get anything done, you have to work together and collaboratively. And you have to have a mayor that has good relationships with the state and federal level. And so I just really want to thank them for their, for their help with all this work. But I'm really excited for Grandview Avenue. I think sometimes you hear people talking about, as I mentioned, about change, where things don't happen before an election. And I remember this was a big piece that people talked about during my campaign. And it makes me want to say to people, don't just listen to, because there's always going to be something not done. We are not miracle workers. We're elected officials. There's not enough money. You don't pay enough taxes to do all the things that people want done. I would love to see us to be able to do everything. Why wouldn't we want to do everything? Why won't we want to succeed? But people will use that and exploit that and exploit the fact that people don't know any better or don't know what's going on, don't know that we're waiting for a grant and can't speak up, don't know that we can't tell you what we're doing because it's not solidified yet, but that we are working, you know, really hard on it. But the administration has also worked extremely hard on Grandview Avenue. has also worked extremely hard on Grandview Avenue and we've gotten more done on that stretch of road than under this administration than we have in decades, and so I just really want to acknowledge that they do a tremendous amount of work and don't always get the credit that they deserve as well, so I want to thank everybody because this was definitely a joint effort with everyone, so thank you all very much for for all the work you did on Grandview and in District Two, thank you. That's it for me, I'm so excited, can't wait.
Thank you.
Now if I can find another thirty million.
Any, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, no, well said, Madam President, you know, in the safety improvements that you had put up on Grandview Avenue, I know you got a lot of flack for that at first, but I will tell you, that has slowed things down, from somebody who's up there on a regular basis, it's much safer.
Can I say something in response? I get a lot of flack on social media, in person and telephone calls and emails, we get a lot of compliments and a lot of accolades for the work that's being done there and, you know, as I mentioned, people like to exploit stuff, so.
Right, no doubt, but that definitely has improved safety up there and as far as, you know, the landslide issue, I don't think PJ McGardle Roadway, you look at, I mean, it's really not meant to carve a road in the side of a cliff like that, but when you look up on that hill as you're going down, it's pretty scary, so, and people got to realize it costs a lot of money and I echo your thoughts on Congressman Doyle and State Senator Fontana, they really are the ones that bring the money to types of projects like that, so, great job in working with them.
Thank you.
Just wanted to back all the things you've done up there, I think were great.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for joining the committee.
Thank you all, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill eighteen ninety.
Bill eighteen ninety, resolution granting unto Red Senior Junior Properties LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a concrete ramp with handrails at forty-nine twenty Harrison Street, ninth Ward, seventh council district.
Am I, motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill eighteen ninety-one.
Bill eighteen ninety-one, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title Four, Public Places and Property, Article One, Chapter four seventeen, to expand the definition of sidewalk and curb maintenance to add language relative to violations and to update language relative to work by the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, can we have a little bit of discussion on this, because we have someone explaining these expanded definitions?
Is that what you told me? Yeah, we can, I can handle that.
Yes.
Is there someone saying something?
Well, I was looking to see who was, who might be with us.
Okay. Hi Director.
Hi, everybody, sorry for the confusion, so with regards to sidewalks, if this.
By yourself, probably.
Oh, I'm sorry, Acting Director Kim Lucas with the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, so the language, the primary change here is that previously when we wanted to go in and repair sidewalks, the language said that we shall find the property owner that was adjacent to the sidewalk that we had hoped to repair and we're requesting that we change that language to may find that individual, we don't want to. I'm sorry?
That was me, so I said, yeah, if people, I think maybe people need to cover up their mics when they're sidebar.
And so we just wanted to make sure that when there, that we are not causing greater hardship, especially in communities that have lower incomes by making repairs and then having to impose fines on them when the department goes out and makes repairs as part of larger projects, especially.
Well, I commend you for bringing this language forward, I think that is the right and just thing to do and certainly there is a lot of fixing to be done out there in terms of sidewalks around the city and we all, I'm sure, get the complaints from people who are, you'll find unsafe sidewalks, some of the time it's actually city property, but in the case where it's not city property and we need to make repairs, repair so there's safe passage, I think I'm absolutely supportive that we do so, thank you, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any further discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, hello, Kim, is it Kim?
Yep.
Hi, Kim, this is Councilman Anthony Coghill, while I have you here, I have my staff trying to get ahold of you today to discuss some lines that were painted up on Brookline Boulevard, yellow lines, you know, I imagine that comes from Domi, and there was a line painted in front of a couple businesses that had been metered parking for forty years and I really need to get to the bottom of it, we took four or five parking spots of the business owners that use it on a daily basis, so we can talk after the meeting and I just wanted to make sure I could get ahold of you, or you want to address it now, that's up to you.
I would like to talk to my staff who paint lines and find out exactly what's going on, so if it's okay, if we could talk after this meeting, that'd be great.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion?
We just have Kim introduce herself, because I think a lot of the public don't know your position right now, could you explain a little bit?
Absolutely, so my apologies, everyone, for a little bit of confusion at the beginning of the call, but my name is Kim Lucas, I have been with the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for two years this week, I have been serving as the Assistant Director for Planning, Policy, and Permitting up until eleven fifty-nine PM on Friday, last Friday, where I have moved into the Acting Director position for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, so if you are familiar with Karina Ricks, she has since left the department and the city for employment with the Federal Transit Administration, and so I'm serving as the Acting Director in her absence.
And congratulations and thank you for taking on the job.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, before we leave this committee, I went a little too fast and forgot, Councilwoman Schlossberger actually wanted to hold a bill for one week with the FIPS Conservatory, so could we go back to bill seventeen forty-four and Councilwoman Schlossberger, if you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, my fault for missing it as we were moving through, so motion to hold bill twenty twenty-one dash seventeen forty-four for three weeks.
Hold on, just technically, motion to reconsider first.
Ah, thank you, motion to reconsider, bill seventeen forty-four.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is back on the table, motion to hold for one week?
Three weeks, please.
Three weeks, sorry. Second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held three weeks, sorry about that, Council. That now moves us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, one bill, bill nineteen hundred.
Bill nineteen hundred, resolution providing for, providing the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies to provide job development and employment services, wages, and fringe benefits for supervisor, staff, worker compensation, unemployment compensation, vocational skills training, and on-the-job training, outreach, recruitment costs, and administrative expenditures necessary to implement the twenty-twenty-one Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and providing the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the twenty-twenty-one Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program at a cost not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, that moves us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, first fervor paper is bill seventeen twenty.
Bill seventeen twenty, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning Articles One through Nine, Title Four, Article Three, and Title Thirteen, zoning Chapter thirteen oh one, making various amendments to the zoning code related to stormwater management.
I have a motion to, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, and I have a motion to amend, this was sent over by the administration.
Second, second it, any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those.
Yes, I do have a question.
Tim and.
Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you, I did see the amendments come through, I saw the original amendments in addition to the highlighted newer amendments, I was just curious, there was a lot there and these are long bills, or these are long sections of the code, I just wanted some clarity on what these particular latest amendments.
Hi, Marty Battistown with the Department of City Planning, we had, we were just cleaning up the formatting, there were some parts that were supposed to be struck through that were bolded and underlined in the previous version, and so most of that is a formatting, which is why, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed, thanks, I appreciate it.
And then.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the amended bill. Is that my job, your job?
It's already, it's already on the table.
It's already on the table.
Any discussion on the bill as amended?
I just really want to thank Councilman Wilson, I actually was asked to make the amendment and her sent a bunch of notes as to what the changes were, so I apologize, it just adds an effective date of three thirty-one twenty-two, when there previously wasn't one for all the departments to rule out this enforcement mechanism for large development projects, and two, it clarifies that all contractors working on stormwater aspects of the development projects must be registered contractors, and three, makes several technical formatting corrections, so that's why it needed amended, so I apologize.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill eighteen sixty-seven.
Bill eighteen sixty-seven, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Five, Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter Five, Forty-nine, Residential Park and Permit Program, so as to clarify the administrative process for the program, provide for virtual permitting, add the permit fees to the city's annual fee book, adopt regulations for the use of visitors' permits and non-residents' permits, and create the hybrid RF, the RPP area program.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
The hearing. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It was for, motion for public hearing.
He made, he made a motion to hold.
Oh, hold, one week?
One week. It will be held for one week.
Thank you.
Our first new paper is bill eighteen eighty-seven.
Bill eighteen eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive into a partnership agreement with the City of Dortmund, Germany to facilitate and promote cooperation on sustainable urban development, both cities will participate in creating a Corporation Plan Reports and documentation of the lessons learned from other cities over the course of the program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill nineteen oh six.
Bill nineteen oh six, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning Article Four, Chapter nine oh eight, Public RAM Districts, amending the code by the addition of a new section nine oh eight oh three D five Oakland Sub District E, O P R E, Oakland Crossings.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearings.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held for cable cast public hearing. Bill nineteen oh seven?
Bill nineteen oh seven, resolution amending resolution number four fifty-five entitled, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Blight Remediation Program to study city on vacant lots in the neighborhood of Homewood, to add language to allow the city to accept the grant award and to spend funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to again congratulate Councilmember, he's always getting stuff done.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, bill nineteen twelve.
Bill nineteen twelve, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Nine, zoning code, Article Seven, Review and Enforcement, Chapter nine twenty-two, Development Review Procedures to Augment the Approval Process for Certain Site Plans Required Under the Zoning Code.
We rebuild nineteen thirteen as well.
Bill nineteen thirteen, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Nine, zoning Chapter nine twenty-two, Development Review Procedures, Section nine twenty-two, with the new subsection Affordable Housing Impact Statements.
I defer to the sponsors of the bill.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion.
With discussion.
Discussion first. Yes, thank you very much.
I believe, as I think the majority of council believes, that we should have housing options for people of all income levels, regardless of your income level, you should have access to clean decent housing and housing that you can afford, and so because people have various incomes, we need various levels of housing options in the city of Pittsburgh, and each district, each community needs different things, some communities need more affordable housing, some communities need more market rate housing, some need more rentals, some need more home, it's, it's a complex, it's a complex problem, and so, but these particular bills, along with bill nineteen fourteen, I'm going to explain them out loud and then send some of them over to planning in terms of what the intentions are, on September ninth, Councilman Lovell and I and a number of community groups and researchers came together to release the study, results of a study that established that low-income neighborhoods, mostly black, but not just black, to be exact, are on the verge of extinction in the city because the banks refused to lend to black families, banks won't lend to those who wish to build affordable housing in our neighborhoods either, I said then, we must act to save black families and their right to live in the city, and the council had to take decisive action to reverse this devastating trend, and so there are three pieces of legislation that I introduced that are interrelated, the first that we've already passed preliminarily was a resolution declaring housing as a human right in the city and mandating the creation of a housing plan that eliminates the affordable housing shortfall, we have all, we have the Housing Authority, Housing Authority, we have the URA, all trying to figure this out, but there's no plan, there's no coordinated plan, and so this called, this legislation calls for a coordinated plan to be created that says, what would happen, what does it need to create twenty thousand, roughly twenty thousand affordable units in the next twenty years, it is my intention, I believe that when we hire our Equity Officer, that would be council's sort of person in this lane, I expect the new administration will appoint someone to replace Mr. Lamar or keep Mr. Lamar or someone else that will be a housing person in the administration lane, and then we can create and continue to coordinate the work of the affordable housing task force, there is right now no individual, no entity that's charged to continuing that work, the other two things then are the two pieces of legislation in front of you, and let me sort of explain what they do, one is amendment that basically to the zoning code that requires developments of large projects to disclose to the zoning application, the impact of their projects will have on the need for housing, so that when we have now these new projects come online, right now, there is no vehicle to assess whether it's going to help affordable housing, whether it's going to hurt affordable housing, because we know if you build, you know, thirty thousand dollar development in a neighborhood, it's going to have impact, both good and bad, and so we need to figure out what our plans for affordable housing, and then we want to monitor every new development and see what its impact may be, it may be, you know, good, it may be bad, and then the third thing, the third piece of legislation, there's amendment to the zoning code which would give city council the right to directly review and approve and reject these large development projects based on their project's consistency with the plans that we've outlined, and I think it's sort of like this, when my wife and I would go out to dinner when the kids were little, we often would get babysitters and, you know, young teenage girls, and sometimes the kids were good, but sometimes they weren't good, I mean, Mr. and I think Bob, you may have that experience, right, one time we came home and there was a, there was a, there was a fire truck in front of my house, right, my, my son had, was told not to play the microwave, he put something in the microwave, it was smoking, she was fourteen, and so she called the paramedics for smoke out of the microwave, and we asked my son, you know, why, why he didn't listen to her, he said, oh, she's not an adult, I don't have to listen to her that, so, okay, well, we give the planning and zoning, we give this right to the planning commission, it's actually a legislative right, we as council have that power and authority, we give it to them, and I, I think most of the time they make right decisions, but I think as the parents, we also have the right, which is our right. And I, I think most of the time they make right decisions, but I think as the parents, uh, we also have the right, which is our right, to oversee these projects. In my mind, um, this would happen very rarely. I don't think this is going to be an everyday occurrence. But every now and then, I think there are projects in our community that are so powerful and so transformational and we as council should make the final determination of whether they're appropriate or not. Now, I did talk to, to planning and to the planning commission. And I'm going to do two things. I'll bring Sean up in case you have technical questions. He helped to draft the legislation. But first thing before I do that, I want to, uh, I did get some concerns and I've actually talked to, um, Eric Strasburger and some of, some of, not all of our concerns, but some of the concerns are reflected in this amendment. What we basically did was increase, um, the size of what would be considered the development. So we would have less, um, of these applications to review. Cause the, my, my, my attempt is to capture big things. Not a person by, you know, building an individual house, not someone building a duplex, but really, you know, four and five unit construction, twenty unit construction, big stuff is, 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 is the intention. And so, um, the process will, will be, I'm going to ask to amend one of the bills. And then at the end of the day, both of them go to planning. They will give us their report and recommendation that'll come back to us. And then I will entertain a variety of other amendments given by council and by planning and whoever else has, you know, friendly amendments. And so, this is the beginning of what's going to be a longer process. So, I just want everyone to know that regardless of what we do today, there is two other steps that have to happen. The planning commission will review, they'll send the recommendations, it'll come back to council. We will review, make our determination and then decide what should be law. And so, I'm going to ask for, uh, at first, just, and then we have conversation, to amend and these amendments are based on my discussion with, uh, the planning director and the zoning administrator. And so, a motion to amend Bill, uh, nineteen twelve.
Second, very brief discussion.
Yep.
So Councilman, I'm just a little bit confused and forgive me if, um, if I misstate this. Originally, my understanding was when these kinds of, of, uh, of changes are offered up, it, it lives in the administration for a period of thirty days and then comes back to council with a recommendation from the administration. Did I hear that?
No, those are two, those are the other bill.
Uh, under section two oh eight of the Home Rule Charter, any structural change to the department itself requires that thirty day blackout period. So there were other legislation introduced a couple of weeks ago which fundamentally physically changed the structure of departments. That had to be held out for a recommendation from the mayor.
I appreciate, thank you. Good, I, I appreciate it. Um, and so, the amendment is to Bill uh, nineteen twelve, but it's nineteen thirteen that ultimately would empower council to, no, it's nineteen twelve.
It's nineteen twelve.
Ultimately empower council to, for lack of a better word, nix a project if, after due process it came here and we just.
The opposite.
Or approve.
Or approve of course.
That, that was nixed by planning commission.
Doesn't, no, they, planning commission would make a recommend, it just changes, I can have the argument. Planning Commission will still make its determination and recommend the council and council becomes the final arbiter. So, we can go, we can agree with them and say yes, we can disagree with them and say no, but we become the final judge.
But aren't we all, already?
No.
There are projects that, sorry.
Go ahead. No, I, I just.
Yeah, let's, let's.
There are projects that now go before the planning commission that never come before a city council. This, my understanding.
Is that they would all happen.
But my understanding is we would now have an opportunity to say, we want to review that project and we want to have final say, be it for or against said project.
It would be a selective process. Not every one of meeting certain condition or criteria would automatically be referred to us. It would be a request of council. So I'm just curious, the legal implications of, of making that kind of discretionary judgment or choice?
Maybe Sean, if you can walk us through the mechanics of the bill and the amendments?
Yes.
The motion to amend on the table.
This amendment would first require the zoning administrator to notify council members of all applications filed in their respective districts within three business days that fit three criteria. Um, and they're all large developments. Um, any plan requiring site plan review under nine twenty two oh four, and those are detailed site plans for projects larger than eight thousand square feet. Um, project development plans which currently are approved, well, I'll go back. Under the first bucket, nine twenty two oh four site planner review, those are all approved by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator can choose to refer the matter to the planning commission for an advisory recommendation, but ultimately the zoning administrator retains the final power. Um, project development plans, which are your much larger plans, um, can't think of an example of a project development plan, but there are plenty in council district three. Um, that are currently approved solely by the planning commission. And then there are planned development districts, your mixed use development districts, your commercial plan development districts, your residential planned unit developments, um, and then yes, your specially planned districts, the S P districts. Not the districts themselves, but projects within them. Um, when the member of council whose district it's in determines that whatever, for whatever reason, this project implicates a significant community concern, they can trigger this provision which then requires the planning commission to hold a public hearing and give council a positive recommendation, uh, a recommendation for approval with conditions or a recommendation to reject the proposal. And then that comes to council.
What would empower a council member to say? Council, is it a vote of, of council?
It's the discretion of the member whose district the project is in. And there's some precedent for that existing already in the city code.
Because we're, we, we legislate for those that come after us, not just for us here. While we may very well, you know, trust one another and the, and the, and the, you know, relationships we have here and now. Those, and I'm not saying that is, but those kinds of actions open-ended across the board actions by an individual member, always give me pause for consideration.
We, again, in the, we, we looked at this both ways. We thought about having a and, and we, we may amend it to this, by the way, because remember, I'm open to this conversation. I'm open to the amendment, I mean, amending. We actually put a lot of thought into whether or not we should have a certain class of development automatically come here, right? We thought that, we did think that line. But if you do that, I didn't want to, I didn't want to overburden the planning commission. I didn't want to overburden council. I didn't want, I wanted to, I wanted, in my opinion, this is going to be rare, right? I don't, I don't think you want to have twenty of these coming to us a month, right? I think it's a rare thing. I think each of us would probably use this maybe once a year, maybe. It's going to be big stuff. Um, but I am open to that conversation and I'm open to amending at some point to do it in a different way. I'm really open to it. My, my, my real intention is this. I believe there are projects that significantly impact our city. That are, that are transformational projects that will impact your district for good or for bad. I believe we should have the right finally to accept or reject these projects if they're of that significance. Right now, there's projects that get approved for your district that you have no say so over that can dramatically change your district. For instance, I mean, for instance, um, I think, um, I don't think it's public yet, but my understanding is UPMC is going to build a two billion dollar hospital in Oakland. If, if they build a two billion dollar development in Oakland, it will dramatically change that community. It will be that, that, that sort of.
They've already dramatically changed that.
But I mean, that kind of invest, but you can even see those kind of, that kind of investment is transformational for, whether it's good or bad. I'm simply saying that council has a role to play. And it's, it, it is a legislative role, believe it or not, that they, the planning is the only commission, although have state things. It comes from our authority, is not their authority. They actually use our authority that we transfer to them for them to use. And I'm suggesting that there is a process. Now, we can discuss what that process is. I'm really open to this. I just want to make sure that, that there, that when we need to, because I have seen this occur over the, I, I believe this last, this is not new for me. It's just the last time, I tried to do this in two thousand.
Nine, ten, fourteen.
Yeah, this is not new. This is not my first crack at this. I tried to do this before. I, I fundamentally believe that this council should have some say so over these transformational projects that happen in our community. We should have some say so on it. This is my attempt.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm open, I'm open to the conversation without making any kind of commitment to it. I'm open to the conversation, but the key word in that last statement was we. And, and the argument is becoming I. One person can make the decision, not the we can make the decision.
No, it, it triggers, the, the council person triggers council's determination. Council as a whole makes the up or down. We just decide that we want council, individual council person.
Take it under consideration.
Yes.
And, and I'll further that point because we gave that a lot of thought. You know, if you want to use your property for a sidewalk cafe in Pittsburgh, the first thing you do is you make application to the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. They determine whether your application is complete under the terms of Title Four of the city code. Then they send that to the member of council whose district it's in. Now, if that member of council says yes, they can have it, that's the end of the process. If that council member says no, then it gets referred to the entire council. So in that instance, that's giving a council member the direct authority to either approve it directly or refer it to council for further action. And what this does is allow council member only to say council needs to look at this and determine yes or no, or yes with conditions.
So, um, I wrote that legislation. I've never agreed with the process of having a council member sign off. And that is not part of the legislation. It is a policy within the department. It's not legislated.
Thank you. So we're still on discussion for the amendment. I have Councilman Gross followed by Council President Smith, followed by Councilman Wilson.
Has you, have you finished?
No, we're still on, oh, we never got there.
Okay, give me one second, Councilman Gross. Let's have, uh, Sean finish actually walking us through the amendments.
Okay, and we'll just start over again so that everybody's at the same place. Um, this amendment requires a zoning administrator to notify the council member in whose district an application is filed for within three business days if it's of a certain size and a certain category. So, projects requiring site plan review under nine twenty two point oh four. Um, project development plans under nine twenty two point ten and planned development districts under section nine twenty two point eleven. Um, where the council member whose district it's in determines that this project implicates a significant community concern. Uh, they notify the zoning administrator who then has to notify all the parties involved, including the planning commission. And that triggers, then when the zoning administrator refers the matter to the planning commission, the planning commission has sixty days to issue a recommendation of approval or a recommendation for approval, approval with conditions or denial. Now, the planning commission still has to use the original review criteria that is, is in the section of the code under which the application is filed. Um, so we're not removing the standard of review, but for the planning commission. Um, then once the planning commission makes that determination of recommendation for approval, approval with conditions or rejection, then they refer it to council. City council then has a hundred and twenty days under the map and text amendment provisions of the city code to schedule and hold the public hearing. And then another ninety days after they hold the public hearing to approve, approve with conditions or reject finally the application. The only proviso here is if the planning commission doesn't act to issue a recommendation within sixty days, it is deemed that the planning commission is recommending approval. And there is some, there's precedent for that in the state planning law that allowed the city of Pittsburgh to establish a zoning code in nineteen twenty seven. That is one of the processes laid out for one type of approval. So this isn't novel.
Alright, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, may I, Mr. Chairman? If the planning commission recommends disapproval, then similar to map and text amendments, similar to conditional use applications, it will take an affirmative vote of seven members of council to override the negative recommendation. And that's in recognition of the fact that the state law that gave the city the right to create a zoning code had the intent of not eliminating the planning commission from its role in providing its expertise and recommendations to city council. Which is why under the state law that allowed the zoning code, it requires the seven votes of council to override its disapproval.
I'll just make one final comment and, and that is, um, I'm open to the process. I'd love to have the discussion. Um, I'm happy to, to be engaged and involved without making any determinations about it. One cause for pause, uh, is the, uh, the, uh, time. How do I want to say this? The, um, provision, uh, for a, for providing for either denial or approval because of the inaction of the body. And we've run amok in that before. Councilwoman Kell Smith, I believe, understands that. When, when, when council fails to take action, certain things happen.
Oh, yeah.
AKA.
Strip club.
Butterbing or Booba, whatever that thing is, yeah. That, that always gives me pause for cause or cause for pause, but.
Well, to answer that concern, because these are things that we've been batting around too. Um, this amendment requires that when a member of council triggers the provision, that the provisions that already exist in the zoning code under nine twenty two point oh five becomes the, their review and approval process. These are pre-exist, the hundred and twenty days for council to hold the public hearing and the ninety days to vote after the public hearing pre-existing the code currently. So that part is not a new process. That is adopting a currently existing process for ease of, for convenience of enforcement and familiarity for council.
We're, we're going to be moving, we're going to be amending this. And we, we, I thought about giving, giving a my point is every part of this is open, I'm open to amending and to have the process. What I'm personally, what I'm not open, me personally, everybody else, I'm not open to the idea that council should not have this authority. I think council, I believe council inherently has this authority. And that, so anything short of that, I'm open to. I just think we should be able to have this authority and to use it, um, when necessary. And I do think necessary will be rare, but when necessary, I think we should have the authority to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you. So, still on the amendment, Councilwoman Gross.
So, this is actually a very lot to process. Um, and I think we can see that in the number of questions that people are asking. But I heard, um, Mr. Carter say and Councilman Burgess say is that the goal here is to kind of trigger a council involvement where it's lacking now. I'm actually supportive as well. You know, that was your, I think, what, Councilman, you just said your bottom line is. It's that you really think that there is a, a, a inherent right of this body to involve itself in matters of like large, I'm sorry, someone's speaking that is interrupting the audio feed. It's confusing. Um, so, um, I'm supportive there as well of the concept that council should have also a vote as a body, but also that public exchange and opportunity for input. I feel that it brings, especially now, these large projects when there are so very many large projects in the city. Um, and they do have significant impacts on the neighborhoods they're in and on the districts they're in and in the, in the, in the city as a whole, honestly. Um, it's not like twenty years ago when there just weren't any projects, right? And so I do feel that additional transparency, additional, um, you know, uh, public involvement and opportunity for comment is positive. But I'm concerned that that is, there are other parts of this bill where you want it, the bill decreases transparency, decreases public involvement and kind of, um, allows development to be expedited. Um, and it may not have been your intent, but what I see is a reduction of waiting periods uh, from ninety days to sixty days. And maybe this is the part that Councilman Kraus was also speaking to just now. That instead of being deemed ninety days of waiting. of waiting period, that if it's not met, the project is deemed a denial. This bill changes and compresses the amount of time that it might take for the public to notice the project, form opinions about projects, have time to turn out to a public hearing. It compresses that and that, that decreases accountability to the public. And then if we, if this, under these, this language, if those timeframes are not met, then the, the project is rubber stamped. Deemed, deemed approval, even though there was really no public vote on it and council didn't vote. And so it allows this body to shirk in a way its responsibilities and just have projects approved. Again, my, it sounds like it's the exact opposite of the entire speech that you just gave, Councilwoman. It feels like it's the exact opposite of your intent. But I believe that your language changes embed that here. And so I'm concerned about the maybe unintended consequences. And then you, I, I, I think it's wonderful that there's, it's married to this statement that requires an affordable housing impact. I'd like also to hear more about that because I'm really enthusiastic. I think it's something that's long overdue, that we should be looking not just at traffic impacts, not just at stormwater impacts, which is really all we've been doing, and to be looking at equity impacts. And to be looking at how these, again, very many projects, five thousand percent more projects than were happening in twenty twelve. And, and this pace is continuing that we should be looking to see whether this kind of project really is aligned with the goals that we talk about all the time, to increase affordable housing, that we know our public supports, because they've shown up many, many times in, in chambers to let us know and at community meetings. And certainly I've been dealing with it in my own district. And so I'm enthusiastic that we should be considering an affordable housing impact for each of these projects. But that the other changes in this bill will probably, you know, give us less time to do that. And that there, I think also Councilman Kraus mentioned, like what about future council people? That there's actually no, there's such loose language around that it's a special project or just because the council person feels like it can, can trigger this, what could be an expediting and automatic deemed approvals. With that, so it's not matched to the other bill whose intent I wholeheartedly support. So I don't know if, uh, Mr. Carter, if you've got some responses there.
Yes, and I apologize if I didn't explain this more thoroughly. That's on me. The provision that deviates from nine twenty-two oh five D referring to planning commission hearings on map and text amendments. Under nine twenty-two oh five point D, the planning commission gets ninety days to give a recommendation to council of approval or disapproval, no approval with conditions. And where the planning commission fails to do that, their recommendation is deemed a recommendation to disapprove. Under this provision, accounting for the fact that city council has a process in this as well, this shortens their ninety day window to sixty. Yes, it does do that. It does say if the planning commission fails to act, that it's a deemed recommendation of approval. It is not actually an approval of the project. It still then has to come to council with a recommendation, but where the commission fails to act, it is deemed a recommendation that the planning commission recommends approval. However, on the council side, now city council has a hundred and twenty days to schedule the public hearing or to schedule and hold the public hearing. If council fails to schedule and hold the hearing within a hundred and twenty days, the project is now deemed an actual denial. After council holds and schedules the public hearing, if it fails to act finally in ninety days after that public hearing, it is again deemed an outright denial. So there's two different checks in that process. And the reason in subsection B of the amendment that it leaves to the discretion of the member of council, whether this is a significant community concern is in legislative processes generally, it is generally something that is left to an individual member, their discretion, their knowledge of their district, and the fact that they have to be held accountable. Taking, if you want to get philosophical for a second, separating the legislative process from the administrative process with land use. When most things are administrative, it removes from the public the chance to hold accountable their elected representatives. However, elected representatives tend to get held accountable when these administrative processes go awry anyway. And so some of that is left to the, that one part is left to the discretion of a single member. But no single member can approve or reject under this provision an application. All that member can do.
I'm going to interrupt you. I'm going to interrupt you. The member does trigger the expedited process that results in an approval, which is not how it happens now. And so that's my part that I think is antithetical to your intent. And so that's exactly what I was articulating that I have.
We're open, we're open, Councilman Gross. We, we actually thought about that for this amendment. We are open to ninety days. We're open to all of that. Remember, my intent, I've already told you my bottom line. And so I'm, I'm, I'm well, I am.
I think it needs to be better aligned. I think. I do have the floor. I do have the floor.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'll ask for your help.
Yeah, absolutely. So to align these very, very many moving pieces would, I, I, again, I would support that intent. I'm, I, I believe that a substantial part now, I think actually since hearing Mr. Carter's explanations, it's even more worrisome than I thought. That is not in alignment. So you're, you know, the, the intent of the bill and the presentation here, especially in the, in the partner pieces, I think can get us to a much better place. But it doesn't look to me that these amendments, the, the other amendments that we were just speaking to will work in the opposite direction. And that is definitely not where any of us want to go. So I think we should talk more about that. I, I'm sensing that, especially with the references to all of these sections and, and, and kudos to Mr. Carter to be able to recite chapter and verse of zoning code so facilely. Ninety-two, twenty-two point oh four B one and, and these things. I don't think most of us were following you, to be frank. There's so many pieces here. I think council maybe wants to dig into it before it's, uh, before we subject our planning commission to this because it seems like we could just do some of this alignment ourselves before we actually get their impact instead of sending them pieces that work in opposition to one another of these actions. So I, I would suggest that we, we do some of that work upfront. But I'll let other members take their turn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you. And, and I want to thank Reverend Burgess and Councilwoman Lavelle for working on this legislation. And Sean, you've done so much work on it. But I just want to say for me, I have watched since I've been here, so much development happened that's been not beneficial in my district, on hillsides. And they're not large developments. Some of them are homes. In places where I've asked for people to intervene, to make sure that they, you know, got some agreements or some kind of assurance, even a bond, something. So that, some of it's been on Grandview Avenue where I'm terrified that it's going to fall down. And nothing. I mean, they, things, they, they just get approved and with very little process. So for me, the whole thing is that, I, I've said this to before. I feel like council members need to have some say on what's going on here. But I think if we had the respect of the directors and of the employees across the board, knowing that council members also hold their jobs in our hands and they understand that a little bit better. I think that they always understand that the mayor does, but they don't understand the role of council. They don't understand that five members of council could change a position, dismiss a position, take something out of the budgets, add something in the budget. I don't think, you know, some people really, because we don't really exercise that. We've always just, we, you know, worked really well with everyone. And I, I don't anticipate us not working well with, you know, whomever is the next mayor. But what I think is that council, and I've said this before, needs to take a stronger lead and a stronger role in the leadership of the city. And, and as you say, co-lead the city of Pittsburgh. And so for me, I think it's better that we're having now nine members, elected members, having some say. We were elected by the people. We were not appointed by a mayor. We're not appointed. And that, these other people are appointed. And not that we don't value what they do. We do, definitely do, and they take on a lot of work. But I think now the difference is the elected body can have some say. And for me, that's, that's you, that's really important. And it actually adds more days, correct me if I'm wrong, it adds more days with the elected body.
Yes.
For this process.
Two hundred and ten to be exact.
Two hundred and ten extra days with the elected body. So it's not, so to me, that's important because then it gives the public so many more opportunities to come and speak and talk. But I think how this would have affected your district in such a more positive way, the way that you would, would maybe prefer, Councilwoman Gross, because I think, I, how many times you've had so many developments popping up all over, they were even difficult to keep track of. I don't know how you would, you know, you had a lot of major projects though. But I think to me, it's, it's once the directors start realizing that council's taking, going to take a stronger role in, in governing the city, then maybe we won't need all these extra things in place. Maybe we'll just have a great communications with some of our employees and some of the various departments. But right now, we don't always have that. And I mean, developments have happened in our areas and I'll find out because somebody will post something or say something. And I'll be like, oh my God. I mean, it's just, sometimes it's, it's something that I'm really worried about, like the hillside on Grandview. I, I would love for even smaller developments to come to us, not just the big ones. Because of the, I think I'd like to see something with hillsides in there that we have some say on that because we're constantly looking for money to help stabilize hillsides. And then we, they have other people with the right amount of dollars, right amount of money come in and just develop on the hillside. And sometimes they're great, but you always worry about the, the stability of the hillside and the people and the businesses nearby. So I would like to have even additional stipulations that they have to come before us added to that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to call Director Dash to the table for clarity. I have a couple of questions for him.
I'm here.
He's with us.
Director, thanks for joining us. Can you introduce yourself for the public?
Yes, Andrew Dash, Director of City Planning, City of Pittsburgh.
Can you just give me a real world example of what, of what we're looking at here? Like for instance, you know, previously we asked about a, someone asked about an example of how this would change us. So like, like literally what do we not see in council right now that we have a decision for that goes to city planning, that goes to zoning, that this would ultimately change?
Um, I mean, the, the bill is slightly amended from the last version that I've spent a lot of time with. My understanding is that the bill triggers anything over eight thousand square feet, which could be, you know, I mean, it could be a small retail building on a neighborhood business corridor. It could be, you know, something that would be roughly, you know, five units, you know, that would, you know, that would potentially, you know, be triggered here. You know, if, if, if that's your, if that's your question as to.
Yeah, it's just for instance, like if you're a business and you're trying to, well, put residential units up top and that doesn't currently fit into. I, I just want to like give a real layperson's understanding of what.
Yeah, and, and actually I do believe in at least the last version that I received from Reverend Burgess, that it actually says a lot area of eight thousand square feet or greater or building. So it could be, I, I, I think there's some points of confusion that planning staff still have as to, to what this applies to. But if it is a lot of eight thousand square feet or more, it could be a large single family house, the way that it's written. You know, I, I don't believe that that was the intent. But, you know, I, you know, and, but at least in my, in my read of what's been provided to us.
So what would?
You know, again, again, you know, I, I received an amendment last, you know, yesterday afternoon. So, you know, we were, you know, trying to, you know, trying to be able to, to look at things from there.
Regardless if, you know, that is the, is that the case with eight thousand square feet above, that that would?
Yes, because under the site plan review criteria in nine twenty-two oh four A, which, which detailed site plans are subject to site plan review under nine twenty-two oh four C? I think it's subsection two of that subsection. Applications for projects in the highway commercial, I believe, the neighborhood industrial and maybe one other are limited or it triggers if they're greater than eight thousand square feet. So Reverend Burgess didn't want to accidentally capture ones that are not currently subject to site plan review because we set the bar too low.
Okay, so say I fit into your model, Director, like what would a typical person, like, I'm just, like, what's an example, what they would go for? Grocery store?
I mean, you know, so something, I, I think what, you know, Sean, Mr. Carter is talking about is around things that have site plan review that may be reviewed administratively. These are not, these, those are not, you know, those are not projects that go to the planning commission. Those are things that, you know, are reviewed administratively. We have a zoning code. If they are determined to be in compliance with the zoning code, then, you know, those are, you know, are pieces that, you know, would potentially be approved. I mean, there, there is, well, I'll hold for any other questions.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get to the bottom of like, like what, like what we're not seeing at council so the public can understand like what we would see then with this, with this change.
Yeah, I, I think there's still some confusion by planning staff, even based on the amended legislation that we've received as to, as to what specifically that would be.
I, I'll ask the sponsor or the sponsors representative.
Well, in terms of the department's interpretation, they are entitled great weight in how they interpret the code. And so a lot of this, a lot of those questions that you just asked will have to be hashed out in front of the planning commission because our intent, Reverend Burgess's intent aside, there's still the weighty question of how the Department of City Planning interprets the zoning code, which is their right to interpret. We did make changes to, and what we thought would address concerns, not necessarily that you need to do these things for us to support it. That wasn't it. They were like, we see these things as concerning and you should know that.
Sean, give him, give him just four examples of large scale projects that do not come to council now. It could potentially come to council.
I could, I can easily.
Please do. I'm just trying to narrate, like I'm trying to.
Okay, so here's the easiest example I can possibly provide. This council had to take a hard vote, I think it was six, three, when we took it to demolish the civic arena. This council will never see, as it currently stands, any development that happens on that site. We're about to put up a twenty-four story skyscraper on the site. Council has no role in whether or not that happens. And, and currently council will have no role on anything built on that site of scale.
So after that vote that took place, that contentious vote, now as long as it's within zoning, or even if there's a variance, it still never comes before council. Okay. Now, I mostly know that, but I just want to make sure that we're just openly talking about what we're talking about here. So, because I'm familiar with the, you know, with the Garden Theater block where, you know, they have done, you know, they've got planning approval. And I mean, I've never, it's never come to the table.
That's another great example.
Never.
Yeah. None, none of that, none of those developments along federal, along north will come to council.
Okay. So, well, I'll let the director, do you have any comment on that? Is that true? Anything?
In, in those, in those two cases, yes. I mean, you know, city council approved the zoning classification to rezone the lower hill, you know, you know, the, the SP district. They did approve that. They also approved the text and the preliminary land development plan. But, you know, the final land development plans, you know, you know, are ones that, that do go through the planning commission and not city council presently under the code. And then to, you know, to the Garden Theater block, you know, that one specifically, I'd have to go back and check, you know, but, you know, there were, you know, I think, I believe variances that were acquired by the, you know, by the zoning board of adjustment. But, you know, that was the approval process for that specific. uh for that specific project. So, you know, so similarly, uh that project did not, you know, did not need to come to city council beyond that.
And so this, I'm sorry, we call them, well, there's an amendment, but this bill, um you know, if amended and everything, I realize you haven't seen the amendment. So and it's, is it your understanding that it would move things to, like it would add two hundred, possibly two hundred and ten days to the already required time? Uh, I guess that that question's for the director right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's an outstanding question that we have because there are, you know, conflicting, you know, this presents conflicting provisions to uh what our existing standards are for any of the developments that would have had to go to planning commission anyways. Um, you know, um, you know, where, you know, so so there, you know, I I think that you know, that would be something that would have to be, to be reconciled. Um, but you know, because typically the timing for, uh you know, for any of those bills that would have, that would have gone through a planning commission recommendation process.
Okay.
Uh, typically that are triggered by this bill uh would have ninety days to go to planning commission and would be deemed denied, which um from my, you know, from my perspective and, you know, is, you know, that ninety days and then uh, you know, and then planning commission coming with a negative recommendation is something that does uh encourage applicants when there is a community process and, you know, potentially community concerns uh to be able to work through those community concerns uh before the project uh leaves planning commission with a recommendation.
So this might be a little convoluted way I asked the question, but uh the next action would be to send it to the planning commission, which is interesting, right? So.
That would, that would be yes.
Which is the exact uh body that we're trying to change here. Well, uh, like, what are they gonna do with this?
Well, I mean, I obviously can't answer for the planning commission. Uh, I think there are, you know, as Reverend Burgess and Sean are aware, you know, I think just some, you know, some questions or concerns that planning staff have.
They're gonna review the process. They're gonna have.
They, they, yeah, I mean, they would, they would review, they would review these changes and make a recommendation back to city council. City council would be the final decision makers on this bill like they are with any bills that come uh, you know, with changes to the, you know, either the map or the text of the zoning code.
Okay. I just want to ask that obvious, non-obvious question. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further members for discussion first round?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I think some of my concerns have already been stated. Um, some additional concerns which may have been stated in our long conversation this morning are just the sheer capacity of our planning and zoning offices. We all know that when developments are trying to go through large and small, and I realize we're talking about large developments here and that the intent uh in future amendments of this bill is to really restrict it to um developments that are very large and kind of few and far between. I still am concerned about the capacity of our planning and zoning, um our planning department and our zoning office. Um, as it stands, there's more than than they can really handle at this point um because of because of just the sheer amount of activity happening in the city. Um, and I know that as we consider future budgets, we're prioritizing that. However, um, I I I knowing that gives me pause for something that could add a huge amount of need for additional capacity or a bigger lift. So that's, that's one thing I just wanted to state. Uh Reverend Burgess is right that we did have a conversation yesterday about some of my concerns and he reiterated his intent to amend. So like Councilman Kraus and like others, I'm I'm open to this conversation. I'm not going to state today whether I fully support or oppose. I just am open to the further conversation and will be following the planning commission's conversation closely as well. Happy to have follow-up conversations with um with a number of people. And then the um the second concern is over just the definition of community concern. What constitutes community concern and who is the community? And this is a perennial question we're asking in all sorts of development and zoning. Um, uh decisions, who holds the power and who who is the community? Is the community just defined as the council member? Is the community defined as people who live there? Is it the RCO? Is it people who don't live in the community but have a stake in 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 the development or have a um, you you know, have a problem with the developer? Like, who is the community? So I think that we need to have more conversation about that and at the risk of opening a can of worms around defining community writ large. Um, I I think that needs to be considered here as well.
Councilwoman, will you allow Sean to respond to one of your comments?
Absolutely.
Um, well, I'll go backwards from the question about who defines the community. Um, it's the member of council. Uh, that's why it's somewhat discretionary because what may be community to Councilman Burgess may not be community to Councilman Lavelle, may not be community to uh President Kale Smith. Um, some things are hard to define in, you know, a definite way. Um, so it was best to use a general term and, oh, and then there's the uh Councilwoman Strasburger, you raised the point about overburdening the planning staff. Now, there's definitely a valid concern about overburdening the planning commission, but the zoning administrator has to review every application that comes in for consistency with the code in order to determine that the application is complete, regardless of which process it goes through currently. If it's a site plan review, that's the sole discretion of the zoning administrator. And so, and Councilman Burgess has had conversations and is concerned about making sure city planning has the resources it needs. Um, in all cases, this aside, to effectively manage the net zoning code.
Every department in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm sorry.
So if I, again, my process is simple. What I'd like to suggest is I would like to do this expeditiously and completely. The reason I didn't want, I made these amendments were based on my conversation with planning. So what I'd like to do is send it over to planning, get all of their concerns in one place. So that when we change it, we'll have all of everyone's concerns in front of us rather than to continue for us to change it, but then they say we want a hundred and twenty days, right? I want a hundred and eighty days. I'd rather get all of their concerns, all of our concerns in one place, and then we make the final determination. So that's why, that's at least my suggestion is by getting, because I would think, I'm I'm pretty sure that the planning commission would prefer council not to use this, not to have this role. I I don't know that, but that would be my guess, is that they are content to being the final decision makers and would probably not want council to ever be the final decision makers. And they would be content to keep our authority to use it the way they've been using it. And I'm suggesting that, you know, that may not be what we want. So let's get their opinion, their recommendations, when it comes back to us, and then we spend as long as we need. I mean, no, I'm not trying to rush this. We'll take as long as we need to craft a compromise that all of us can live with. That's the process.
I'm up for sending it over. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, were you finished?
Sorry. I'm sorry, Erica.
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of go to that section that I was referring to and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so Mr. Carter, I'm gonna read this and then you can tell me if I've got the right section. Um, I'm reading it. And again, I have, I don't have these sections summarized the way you do, but it's nine twenty-two point oh four point B point one. Notification to City Council of Applications Filed. Section C here seems completely unnecessary. Right? If your, if your goal for this section is that zoning should notify City Council, you don't need section C at all, which says the planning commission shall hold a public hearing on the application. The commission shall act to recommend approval or approval with conditions or denial of the application within sixty days instead of it being ninety. If we do think the planning commission needs more resources, if we do think that we want to, you know, add council, it isn't necessarily um helpful to reduce planning commission's response time. So um where the commission fails to render said recommendation within the period required by the subsection, which is sixty days, the decision shall be deemed every recommendation of approval of the application. So the intent of this bill is to give council the opportunity to intervene. Where I read that section is, even if council, if council doesn't intervene, there's an expedited planning approvals. So let's say you you don't intervene instead of the current situation where planning has ninety days. And if they don't, if they, you know, don't meet that ninety day requirement, you have it deemed um rejection. Um, why put this section in there at all? If the, if the, our goal, which I I hear every member agreeing on, that there should be some trigger that we take some of these developments to a greater public participation and bring them to council for an additional vote because they are that impactful. Either positively or negatively, as the councilman said. Then why make other ones have less process and a rubber kind of a fast track um with less public oversight? Just strike that section. Um, I'm not even sure why we would send it to the planning commission for their response. Um, and so I do, I do think we should have a a lot, we should be digesting this at city council um before we even send it to the planning commission. Um, I think it's clear from all the questions that we've had here that we haven't even had a chance to process this. Um, and so it's council's um obligation that we can't vote this through without um sending it to planning commission. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do our homework and have this feedback with members. Sorry, Councilman, I didn't um talk to you between Tuesday and today, but this is the the discussion and and I'm I'm hearing a lot of and learning um as we discuss. And I do think we need time as a bite to um to process that. I would like um Director Dash to tell me if what I just said was right or wrong in the way he's reading it. Um, is that how you read um and interpret the section that I just read? That would be helpful. Thank you.
I, yes, I mean, it does, it does change uh the, you know, it does shorten at least the process uh on the planning commission side. It keeps the council process the same as it would be for any other application uh that goes to city council. Um, you know, and I, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, just part of, I think what, you know, I, you know, I think as far as that goes and as far as, you know, council uh having the concerns to bring uh certain types of applications before them that may not be now. I mean, there is a way to do that, and that's through the conditional use process. Uh, city council does uh, you know, process conditional uses and they have a defined process and they have defined timelines uh for for both uh the planning commission and for city council to um, you know, to be able to to hear a bill uh and, you know, and what the public processes surrounding that uh to, you know, to allow for those negotiations to go on. Uh, you know, and and another point, you know, around that is that, you know, with those conditional uses, there there are and have to be legal and objective criteria for making a decision. And so decisions, you know, to to clarify an earlier point, I mean, decisions are not made arbitrary, you know, decisions that are made administratively are not made arbitrarily. They're made on the code and that, you know, that, you know, we have to have legal and defensible standards to be able to, you know, to, you know, whether it's city planning staff doing that administratively or whether that's planning commission, you know, making that decision or city council, uh, you know, that we have to have legal and, you know, you know, we we have to have legal and objective, uh objective criteria to be able to um, you know, to assess an application and to be as, to be able to assess, um, you know, what the process for an application would be consistently. So that, you know, if, as Councilwoman Kale Smith had noted earlier, if there are, you know, if there are issues with certain types of developments on hillsides um that, you know, that are desired to go through uh further review and 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 have council ultimately be the decider. You know, we just, we need to be able to do that in a way that defines what types of developments those are so that those consistently go uh to city council for for that review. That the timing, like, you know, like you were stating, uh Councilwoman Gross is consistent and, you know, and goes, you know, through the proper channels of review and has, has, you know, has the proper right, you know, review process for all things that are of that same classification uh and objective criteria to be able to make a decision. Uh, again, no matter, no matter what level that decision's being made at.
Do I get it? There, I'm sorry, too much up on my screen. Um. Uh, I hear, I hear members saying that, well, let's just kind of, you know, throw it the way it is over to planning commission and get their feedback. Um, um, Councilman Burgess says that all the comments are in one place. Um. But I I just, I think I'll just reiterate what I said. I feel that parts of this set of bills are are at odds with each other. So while the the intent, especially with the affordable housing impact statement, is that, you know, we can um acknowledge that there are impacts to communities uh that may be negative, which has, you know, decreasing um affordable housing opportunities. Um, but then it's only represented in Bill nineteen twelve as um is it impactful? What is the wording? Deems. Um, you know, council person says there's something special about the project, I think, maybe. It's one of the the language. So it really isn't tied to the kind of values that and um, public the improvement and common good goals that city council has discussed, which we discuss a lot, right? Right? This, what is for, what is our city need now? What should we be promoting? What should we be discouraging in order to create the common good? That is part of our role and our power as a body. Um. But it isn't reflected in Bill nineteen twelve. It just kind of says like, well, a council person can trigger the greater participation. I I think that those should have some parameters um so that we can be sure they're aligned with our um goals as a body, acknowledging that they may not be the exact same situation in each person's district. Uh, absolutely, we are always mindful that we have very bifurcated um real estate and land use um needs in different parts of our city. Um. And yet, um, what I've, I think is embedded in the language of nineteen twelve does the opposite. It actually expedites the planning approvals. Um, so there's less, certainly no involvement by council and less involvement by the public. And I'm I'm deeply concerned about the inherent flaws um intentions there. Um, in the very, very complicated sets of amendments to all different parts of code, um, it's, it's, it's hard for us to suss out how all these parts move together. And it's certainly, um, I think I'm just, we're just starting to see some feedback um from members of the public. They're, they're just, you know, now being made aware of this legislation. Um, so I would encourage council to to have uh for us to process this a little bit better um amongst ourselves um and maybe send a more coherent um set of recommendations or, you know, a build that's more coherent to the planning commission um for their, for their response. Um, yeah, uh but I'll I'll give you um um another chance, Director Dash, to to maybe chime in on any other things that I might not have asked you explicitly.
No, I think that's, I mean, I I think that your last point is a good one. I mean, I think that the more, the clearer that the intention of this bill is, is actually in the language itself, um, the better that the planning commission and planning staff are able to respond to it. Um, you know, I, you know, on that, you know, on on your last point of significant community concern, I mean, without a definition to that, it, you know, it, you know, it is something that causes uh, you know, great concern uh from from our side relative to. uh, you know, great concern uh from, from our side relative to how that would be administered and how uh different people would look at that. And I think to, to your point on different districts having different concerns, I mean, I think that comes in the, you know, and how we can apply uh certain things within, within certain zoning districts. Um, you know, for example, noting, you know, that, um, you know, there are, you know, particular council districts. Um, you know, council district two, council district four, that have a lot more of the hillside zoning and that there may be uh greater concerns around certain activities and hillside zoning uh than, you know, than there are maybe in, you know, residential zones that are primarily in your district or District Eight, you know, I mean, you know, just based on, you know, density and activity that occur in some, in some of those places. And I think that that's, you know, definitely something that, you know, planning staff is, is more than willing to, to have, you know, to have those conversations. Uh, you know, with Reverend Burgess, with you all, with you all as council, you know, council members to to make sure that the zoning code is doing what we want it to do, which is, I mean, the, you know, the I mean, you know, the, the intention of the zoning code is to, uh, you know, to be able to put the guardrails up to minimize secondary impacts and development as we approve it. And, you know, and, and, you know, that can be, those can be standards, those can be, you know, those can be uh putting the right places for public process. And, you know, we're definitely willing to, to work with you all uh to figure out what that right balance is.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think I'll stop my comments there. I've kind of stated how I feel that there's um internal conflict in these bills. Uh, and though while I support their intent, I am very concerned that there are some pieces that, um, parts of them, which actually work um to the opposite effect. Um, but okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other discussion second round? If not, Councilman Carrkill.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I'm willing to bet my district is probably the least impacted by this legislation coming down. Not to say that won't change, um, you know. Can't, I can't remember the last big development that I've had, if any, to tell you the truth. Um, there are a few things I'm working on that might fit into this. Um. The intent of it, I am all for. Um, you know, I feel like the councilperson knows the district and hears from the people more than anybody. And I just take the direction from the people and I imagine you all probably do the same thing. Um, so coming here today, I was, you know. Thinking, yeah, you know, I like the idea of having council oversight for such developments. Uh, you know, rate, questions were raised, though I will say, you know, um, Councilman Wilson raised a question as prolonging stretching out, uh, you know, developers' plans. And I guess the, the idea is we're going to work that all out through whatever, when, when, when we get it back from the planning commission, right? So how long before the planning commission gets back to us with a recommendation, I guess?
The planning commission, uh, you know, once a bill is referred to the planning commission, uh, we have uh ninety days to hold a public hearing and make, and make a recommendation to city council.
You will have a public hearing on this?
Uh, we will, yeah, I mean, we'll have a, we would have a hearing at planning, at, at planning commission. So the way that the way that these bills or the way that text amendments to the zoning code work is that uh it would go twice to the planning commission. Uh, the first meeting would be just a briefing um by the bill's uh sponsors to the planning commission. Uh, where they would introduce the bill and receive questions from the planning commission. Um, typically, two weeks later, uh, at one of the, one of the uh planning commission's regular meetings, they would hold a public hearing on the, you know, on the bill as well. And so there, there is a public hearing requirement for the planning commission relative to uh text amendments, which, which this bill is. And then obviously, once it's referred back to city council with a recommendation, uh, then there would be a public hearing before city council.
Okay, and Mr. Dash, you know, when you're reviewing this, you will send back a recommendation, yes, no? Will you send a recommendation as to each individual, you know, um, thing that's in the bill or how's that work?
Uh, so typically, I mean, it, it, I mean, there's an, it depends uh with an answer to this. Um, as, as many of our recommendations to city council um on, on bills uh go, sometimes it's as simple as a recommendation that city council approve or a recommendation city council deny. Uh, at the same time, I would say, you know, a majority of the recommendations that we send back to you uh have conditions uh of some sort. And so, you know, there may be times that a planning, you know, the planning commission says, all right, well, you know, we, we support this and recommend approval, but these things need to be changed. Or, you know, we could, you know, or in their recommendation, they could say, you know, we recommend denial for these reasons. Uh, and, you know, and, and so uh they would outline more detail in their recommendation uh to the city council uh when that is referred back to city council.
Okay, and this could be for Mr. Carter or anybody who wants to answer the question. Uh, you know, I hear about the big developments. Um, you know, I, of course, am more interested in the smaller ones. And, you know, to have oversight on as to what the smaller developments, um, you know, in my district that go on all the time. So, uh. You want to answer that?
Well, the amendment, the amendment before you that hasn't been approved yet um sets the floor at eight thousand square feet. Now, I know that the Director Dash had a question of whether that's the land and the structure, and that's a question that will have to be worked out. Um, but it was the Reverend Burgess's intent to set the floor at eight thousand square feet, so we're not catching some guy trying to renovate his house. Or his, you know, apartment building. It's just.
Eight thousand square.
Yeah, and, and so for those, for the smaller developments, I mean, you know, I mean, the eight thousand square feet, whether it's uh square footage or whether it's lot size and, you know, the way that I read at least what was forwarded to me from, from Sean yesterday afternoon is that it says both. It says and, it says and, and or, um, you know, to that. Um, that a lot of these smaller projects that, you know, or building alterations uh that go on that are administratively approved would now be um, you know, pretty significantly delayed um before, um, you know, before they would be able to be approved. And so I think that that's an issue that, again, you know, it, you know, we're more than willing to, to, to work with council members to understand what that threshold of types of developments that are causing the greatest concern uh would be. And how to make sure that the, you know, any proposed legislation or any proposed changes to the code reflect that. Uh, so, you know, I, you know, I think it's, it's something that, like I said, I mean, you know, the thresholds that are set now in this bill to, you know, to planning staff, to, to myself, uh, seem pretty low and like they're going to catch a lot of projects, uh, you know, not as many projects as the initial bill did. Uh, you know, you know, but um a lot of projects that very, the, the majority of those would not have gone to planning commission in the first place. Uh, the majority of those were not, you know, were not, were projects that were uh going to be administratively uh handled and were going to be something that, you know, that zoning staff could approve administratively. And now that didn't have a planning commission process. And now those will have both a planning commission and a city council approval process uh where they didn't before. And so, um, you know, I think that, you know, that's where you know, a concern of ours uh would be around, you know, how um, you know, again, how we make sure that the right types of development that city councilors are most concerned on. Uh, you know, are ones that, you know, that might need to take on that extra process and whether that's changing those things to conditional uses. Uh, whether that's, uh, you know, changing review criteria. I think those are things that, you know, that, that definitely can take place. Um, but that triggering, you know, the, the thresholds where they are, are right now still trigger a lot of development, you know, like I said, administrative projects that would add an additional four to eight months to their, you know, to their review process. And so, you know, that is something that, you know, like I said, I mean, there's probably a nuance in there as to what, you know, what constitutes, um, you know, a project that uh council members really, uh, you know, are concerned about and making sure that we're trying to address those in the right way.
Okay, so there's a lot to digest here, you know, um, as far as I'm concerned. I, one of my main concerns is what Councilman Wilson brought up as to prolonging a development or, you know, stalling a development at the councilperson's request. Um, you know, so the idea here today, we are voting to send this to the planning commission for your opinion. And once we get that opinion, if it's not favorable for council, we then can still act if we want. Or we could take their opinion and say, oh, they're absolutely correct.
Right, it is city council's decision ultimately uh as to, as to what to do with the legislation. The planning commission solely provides a recommendation.
Okay, and I did plan to have conversations with uh the other council members who have much bigger, broader developments on a regular basis. I haven't had that chance yet to talk to everybody. I know where Reverend Burgess sits, of course, and, and Mr. Lovell, and I know they have a lot of developments, so. Uh, I don't find any harm in sending this to the planning commission uh for your opinion. And, um, you know, I guess we'll tackle it once it comes back.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Wilson, followed by Councilman Kraus.
I just have one question. We send this to the planning commission. They give us their approval, disapproval. Um. To what extent can the bill be amended? After it's been, or is it, if we amend any portion of it? You know, like, like up to what, like, like can be amended? Then would we have to further send it back to to the commission? I'm just kind of curious on the amendments after it comes back.
Once it comes back to city council, it is then in our hands, we can amend it up until we pass it or deny it.
And not have to send it back.
Right.
Uh, except for, except for, yeah, sorry to with Councilman Lovell's point, um, if there are significant, if there are significant changes beyond uh the planning commission or the planning commission's recommendation around edits. Um, it would have to be referred back to the planning commission. Again, the planning commission, you know, planning commission can make the same recommendation after it's amended and city council can take an action that is, that, you know, that is or is not in line with the planning commission's recommendation, uh, but it would have to be sent back to the planning.
We keep coming back.
Uh, after, after those edits, if, if, like I said, if they are uh significant edits that are outside of the planning commission's recommendation.
We keep coming back. This works significant.
It's, I mean, which is really, I mean, really something that we use the law department and their guidance.
Now, I'm just going off of the, because there's been some question with the language here about significant community concern. I'm just making a point on how do we determine it's significant? So even when those, when we come back and we're making, if there's more amendments.
Yeah.
Be good recommendation on that.
I use, I use the wrong phrase. I think it's substantive change is what the, is, is what, you know, is what we're, we're actually referring to for uh for the legislation, but, um, but yes.
So, Mr. Chair, man.
Councilman Kraus.
Just maybe to end the conversation for today. Um, I, I can see the wisdom in, in further consideration by council because there, there has been a lot of very good points that have been brought up. Ultimately, I'm going to vote to send it over. Um, if it's the will of the body to take a little more time for further consideration to, um, to make tweaks that have been suggested today, then let's do it. Um, either way, I'll cast the vote today, whatever the, the body wishes to do. But I, I don't see any harm in taking a little, a little, a little, I stress, while longer to tweak here and there and then send it over. But either way, um, I'll vote to, um, to support the will of the body today.
Back in, Mr. Chair. I, I would first send it. I'll tell you why. I did meet with planning. I asked them specifically to give me written comments. They refused to do that. I asked them specifically to work with them to do this. They don't want me to do this, so they would not help me, which is okay. I'm not in agreement with that. I mean, I'm no, have a problem with that. That's why I'm pretty adamant about sending it over to them so I can get in writing what their concerns are, so that when we do change it, we're changing it consistent with what they want. My, my worry is that we'll change it. But it still doesn't meet their concerns or, because every time I talk to them, they have a legalistic definition of things, so I can't determine what that means. So I would prefer to get it in writing of what their concerns are.
So. A teaches principles before personalities. So let's try not to devolve into personalities and stick with the, the, what's before us. Um, and. If you're comfortable with sending it over and having it come back and, and we make either significant or substantive changes and it goes back again and they come back and we make significant or substantive changes and it goes back, then so be it. That's the process. I'm happy to support that. So if that's the wish and the will.
The department changes.
Let's, uh, let's vote.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion, second round? Third round, Councilwoman Gross.
Just briefly, um, I, I, um, thank you to Councilman Kraus for his willingness to, to do the process either way. I do think there could be some easy friendly amendments that could be worked out in a week. You know, most two that would make this more coherent. I really do feel that there's an internal conflict in the legislation. Um, so I would, you know, humbly respect, um, our humbly request that they, we just hold for a week and see, you know, we haven't had these conversations yet. Um, and we might be able to just, to do these, um, some simple amendments that could make it a lot stronger going to the planning commission.
Thank you. Any further discussion, third round? Seeing none, we're actually still on the amendments, so motion to approve the amendment.
Aye.
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 Motion to hold, motion to hold and send to the planning commission.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is approved to hold incentive planning for, for review and recommendation.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Really thank you.
That takes us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess. Uh, one new paper, well, first new paper is Bill eighteen eighty-five.
Bill eighteen eighty-five resolution authorizing pursuant to chapter one seventy-three of the Pittsburgh City Code, the renaming of Roberto Clemente Drive in the Fourth Ward to Roberto and Vera Clemente Drive.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cable cast public hearing, Bill eighteen eighty-six.
Bill eighteen eighty-six resolution providing for an agreement with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education or another vendor chosen through the city bid process for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two food service program in the Department of Parks and Recreation. Total cost not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilman Strasburger. First new paper, Bill nineteen oh four.
Bill nineteen oh four, resolution amending resolution number seven fifty authorizing the mayor and director of permit licenses and inspection. The director of city planning and chief of innovation and performance to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Building Eye Inc. to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning permit licenses and violation data in order to add an additional year of service and seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars of compensation.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just wonder, is this up and running? This one guy?
Also President Smith?
I'm sorry.
And they couldn't hear you, that's why.
I'm sorry. Is this program up and running still? Because I know it wasn't. It was down for a while. You know? It looks like we have Director Kinder here to answer. Director Kinters, you're doing double duty. Director, this and now IMP, but.
Uh, thank you, Council.
Ending the community meeting last night, too.
Uh, absolutely. Thanks for your leadership there. Um. Uh, Building Eye is up and running. It is now also called Civic Central, which may have caused the confusion. It was down for uh about a month and a half as we transferred all of our data to the Civic Central platform, which is essentially the same platform with additional bells and whistles. Um, this is an extension for one year. Building Eye allows us to maintain our open data commitment to show all building permit and code enforcement and planning data in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, we've had some really great responses and stories from um contractors and developers and members of the community who use Building Eye to track what's happening in their neighborhood, track a specific development um and project manage a development. So it's a really wonderful tool that we've uh come to know and love these last, I think, four years that we've been using Building Eye slash Civic Central. Um, it is up and running and we have a few additional features coming in twenty twenty-two um including a better display of our condemned data. Um, better display of city funded demolitions, so a sort of a page on that building I that's very specific for that. So a sort of a page on that building I that's very specific for that. And some reporting tools to help folks run data on what's going on in their, their neighborhood in a format that they can actually play around with.
I'm, I'm just happy to hear it's up and running and, because I really do like it. So thank you and thank you for letting me know the name has changed too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill nineteen oh-five.
Bill nineteen oh-five resolution amending resolution number three thirty-six authorizing the city's Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into relevant agreement with Information Age Technologies, Inc. for software subscription services to be used at the city's healthy, healthy active living senior centers in connection with data collection and reporting of services to Allegheny County Department of Human Services area agency on agent as required by separate agreement with the county and an overall price not to exceed fifty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, one deferred paper, Bill eighteen fifty-two.
Bill eighteen fifty-two resolution authorized in the U R A to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, entered to the publicly owned property in the twentieth ward, council district number two, Suffer Avenue, southwest side of Suffer Avenue, south of Sherwood Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Council President.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for noticing these properties and for holding last week. And I actually want to hold, continue to hold for at least another four weeks. It was really the U R A purchasing the properties for part of the avenues of hope and hoping that eventually they'll get to the additional areas of Zephyr Avenue and the other areas here. But I just don't feel comfortable letting property go without knowing what the plan is and especially in, on Zephyr and Sherwood and areas that have already been so impacted by our poor decision making. So I'd like to hold it for, until I feel a little bit more comfort level with this. If Councilwoman doesn't mind, for another four weeks, please.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Thank you.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill will be held for weeks.
Thank you.
New papers, Bill eighteen ninety-two.
Bill eighteen ninety-two resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the storefront suite project, twenty-one sixty-four to twenty-one sixty-six Center Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended, Bill eighteen ninety-three.
Bill eighteen ninety-three resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for fifty-two twenty-six and fifty-two twenty-eight Dresden Way.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill is recommended, that does exhaust our agenda or our meeting announcements this afternoon with sessions at one thirty and two fifteen. Council will hold a briefing with the Office of Equity to discuss the long-term strategy for welcoming Pittsburgh. Tomorrow morning with sessions at ten, ten-thirty and eleven AM, council will hold a briefing with the law department to discuss the recommendations and updates to the Sunshine Act. Next week, council will hold the regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, October fifth and Wednesday, October sixth, respectively at ten AM. Speaker registration closes at nine AM, the morning of these meetings. Register to speak at the next week's meetings, fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage by the registration deadlines. You also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Any motions or any announcements from members? Seeing none, need a motion to excuse, ask a member approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.